Were you able to get in, no?
No, it's the I C E personnel have to go in through the Trinidad through their accounts and go in. That's what they had to do last time. It wasn't like me put my password in or nothing. It just locked me up. I punch everything in. It says, it comes up, agree, I hit agree, takes me right back to account needs updated. And just does that. No, on my Google Drive, my council account will let me in and I was on it at the house.
Please go ahead, councilman. You were saying.
The big old new Raiders stadium and everything.
Yeah.
I was going to try and break in there and tag it Broncos all over. But they got pretty heavily guarded. No, you can't get in there.
It was very nice of you to send me pictures, councilman.
Yeah, I knew you would enjoy that.
My new Mecca.
Yeah.
Maybe we have a work session next Monday, don't we? Yeah.
That'll help them fly by up. No, I mean Monday, next Monday is opening, opening.
That game doesn't start until H one.
Really?
H one, they have a double header. It's every year, the first Monday night game, they have a double header now. So one game starts late and that's the game.
Good evening and thank you for tonight's, for attending tonight's meeting. Today is September the third, twenty nineteen. The time is now six P M. Regular meeting, city council, the city of Trinidad will not have an order. Colonel Murphy, please leave us under pledge allegiance. We should work tonight.
Pledge allegiance.
To the light of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call call, please.
Benado.
Here.
Gudal.
Here.
Diego.
Here.
Lopez.
He's ill.
Mate.
Here.
Miles.
Here.
Rico.
Here. Approval of the agenda. Council have any changes? Can I have motion, please?
I'll move.
Second.
Second.
Call vote.
Benado.
Yes.
Gudal.
Yes.
Diego.
Yes.
Yes.
Miles.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. Item three, policy items and staff reports. We don't have any tonight. Item four, petitions or communications are all written. Do we have anybody signed up? Item five, consent agenda. Five A, approval of the regular meeting minutes of August the twentieth, twenty nineteen, and special meeting minutes of August the twentieth, twenty sixth, twenty nineteen. Item B, renewal of security services agreement with Trinidad School District number one. Kind of just a little bit of information on that, and that is for a period from May fifteen, nineteen to six thirty, twenty twenty. And that's a school resources officer for services for their schools during the school year. And that was approved, by the way, by the school district on, from thereon, on August the twenty eighth, twenty nineteen. Item C, renewal of security services agreement with Trinidad State Junior College. The same thing, that goes from October the first, twenty nineteen, to May the thirty first, twenty twenty. Will have an automatic two-year renewal. And that will be for routine patrol during the day as well as athletic events and other events in the evening and all weekends. Item, item D, approval of the bills for four million, five hundred eighty-two thousand, three dollars and thirty-three cents. Item B, approval of payroll, September the seventh, twenty nineteen, through September the twentieth, twenty nineteen, to the tune of three hundred forty-two thousand, one hundred sixty-five dollars and ninety-two cents. Could I have a motion, please?
Salute.
Second. Any discussion, any thoughts on that? I do have one, Mr. Goriosso, Charlie Goriosso, those two security agreements, are they, my concern is with the, with the officers that you have are able to.
Yes, we're currently staffed and they're, they're actually working there now. Yeah, the predicted McDonald's last year is I had those that we were short plus that I had the three that were on leave, so they kind of put us at a pitch.
I just have one quick question. The two amounts are different. I think the college is thirty-six and the high school is fifty.
Well, it's based on, we do some extra services for the high school. We do security checks at night. There's other stuff that we're doing in addition to just the officer being present.
Thank you. There's others, thank you. Call vote, please.
Benado.
I have to stay on the regular meeting of minutes on August the twentieth, twenty nineteen because I was absent. And yes, on the special minute, special meeting of minutes of August twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen.
Gudal.
Yes.
Diego.
Yes.
Mate.
Yes.
Miles.
Yes.
Yes. Item six, six A, public hearings. Consideration of, consideration of ordinance providing for a moratorium upon the approval processing or accepting of any application from area marijuana hospitality spaces in which medical and/or retail marijuana may be consumed or sampled made allowable by Colorado State House Bill nineteen dash twelve thirty. For the audience that is, those are smoking units. Hearing is now open. Les, do you have anything on that?
Mayor, I really don't. I more than have to answer questions of council, but as you know, this is a subject of a work session and so I think it's been discussed at some point. But again, I more than have to answer any questions they have.
Do they have any additional questions?
I do not. We're in compliance of all legal requirements, right?
Yes, sir.
Is Rico?
No, sir.
Nothing.
Okay. Anyone in the audience to speak for the ordinance? Or against? Hearing is now closed. Item six A one, check medium ordinance providing for a moratorium upon the approval, processing, or accepting of any application for any marijuana hospitality spaces in which medical and/or retail marijuana may be consumed or sampled made allowable by Colorado State House Bill nineteen dash twelve thirty. Could I have a motion, please? Second.
Second.
Any additional discussion? None? Call vote, please.
Benado.
Yes.
Gudal.
Yes.
Diego.
Yes.
Mate.
Yes.
Miles.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. Item seven, unfinished business. We have none. Item eight, Miss Lane's business, P A. Appointments to the space create commons oversight board, which would be Ms. Erin Overtree, Miss Harriet Bojois, and Chris Smith. Are they in attendance?
I'm here. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, mayor. If I listen, Mr. Smith, he wasn't able to make it this evening. I have him scheduled for next agenda. And if you remember, because of my area, area, error. Harriet Bojois appeared last meeting and I didn't have her on. Must have this mental what going on, but if you would please consider Harriet's appointment as well, even though she's not here, that was my.
Does that feel that way? How many is on that?
Uh, no, that would be, if next meeting you appoint Chris Smith, that makes six, I believe.
How many is board?
Seven to nine.
Seven to nine, okay. Thank you.
So appointments tonight would be Erin Overtree and Harriet Bojois. Could I have a motion, please? Would we name the following two mentioned people to the common oversight committee? Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? None? Call vote, please.
Benado.
Yes.
Gudal.
Yes.
Diego.
Yes.
Mate.
Yes.
Miles.
Yes.
Item B, consideration of bid results for project. Zero six dash twenty eighteen, Church Street ADA improvements, phase one. Should go to purgatory valley construction with a total amount of one hundred seventy-four thousand, five hundred twenty-nine dollars, which is a low bid. Three bids were received, but they were low bid. Could I have a motion to, could I have a motion, please?
And who will we accept for the purgatory valley construction company for the sum of one hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars?
A second, please.
I'll second that.
Mr. Beach.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh, this is the project we have spoke about a couple of times for the south side of Church Street between Amos and Convent. To do sidewalks, curb cuts, ramps, give rid of tree grates that have become turned heads. It is a little bit of asphalt repair as we can get into the street. We're not going to do the entire street because we do have to, we should end up doing utilities at that time, but that would be the north side. That's like we call this phase one. Phase two will be.
When will that start?
Probably as soon as we can, yeah, this fall.
Would you go on?
Have one question. Just, you know, there's such a huge difference in the low bid, even to the second low bid. Does that ever cause you concern?
It does. It always does. And we do a side by side comparison of all numbers. And some of it is, if I may, purgatory valleys experience doing these kinds of projects. And their past experience, knowing how to do them and get in and get out and what needs to be done. Some of it is materials, some of this, the materials are pretty much the same, I shouldn't say that, but it's mostly just labor experience.
And just a question I need to ask for my own, you're bonded, everybody.
Oh, yeah, so this is a bonding, this is a bonding type of process.
That's all right.
Mr. McTague.
No questions?
Questions?
Uh, the only thing that I would like to mention is that, you know, that I think just not ask when you would start. Just try to move some of this project on as soon as possible because that way we can show some activity.
If we get the contractors, you know, the contractors are available, when they are available, we're getting them going.
Further discussion? Call vote, please. Thank you.
Benado.
Yes.
Gudal.
Yes.
Diego.
Yes.
Mate.
Yes.
Miles.
Yes. Item eight C, the first reading of an ordinance amending section fifteen dash eleven noises, scope of prohibition of chapter sixteen, public peace, morals, and lawfare. Article one, offenses against public peace of the code of the city of Trinidad, Colorado. To expand the prohibited scope of noise to better protect the quiet enjoyment of the general public, consider a hearing date for consideration of several ordinance to six P M, September the seventeenth, twenty nineteen. Could I have someone introduce, please? I'll introduce. Have a motion, please. Have a second.
Second.
Les, do you have anything you want to add to that?
I don't, mayor, council members. I happy to answer any questions on that. The proposed changes, and we have a line for you, and you're trapped ordinance, so I think this is what council is going to do. I, I'm wanting to discuss this matter further if we could, please, but not now. But there's still a few other matters and, but I have nothing to elaborate upon now.
Okay. Any other discussion, council? Call vote, please.
Benado.
Yes.
Gudal.
Yes.
Diego.
Yes.
Mate.
Yes.
Miles.
Yes.
Rico.
Item eight D, setting of a, setting of a public hearing for the appeal filed by the Trinidad Building Company LLC of a decision rendered by the planning and zoning ingredients commission. Could I have a motion, please? Second. Second. Les.
Mayor, council members, thank you. I was in attendance at this planning zoning hearing. And what this was, was the denial of the renewal of, or the cancellation, or the expiration, whatever the correct verb is, for a conditional use permit for this C U P holder for a permit that was approximately five years old and had not been acted upon. And so after that ruling that was adverse to the C U P holder, they are now appealing to you.
Is this marijuana?
It is marijuana. It was in the commercial street mini mall, if you will, area.
Any questions for Les, Mr. McTague?
Is that four fifteen, most commercial that you're talking about?
It's not important.
Okay, it is.
There's one, there's one gap.
Correct. Yes, sir.
I have no questions.
None for now. Gudal. Me? The only I did have is we have a, the public hearing will be when?
My recommendation is October the first at six P M. And it's just to allow plenty of time to do the noticing and.
So that was setting the public hearing for October the first at six P M. Call vote, please.
Benado.
Yes.
Gudal.
Yes.
Is that a yes?
That is a yes.
Diego.
Yes.
Mate.
Yes.
Miles.
Yes.
Rico.
Item B, Trinidad Housing Authority Cooperative Agreement Amendment. Yeah, I'd like to call for a tabling of this in light of recent correspondence. Can I have a motion to table, please?
Would that be to the next meeting or something?
We'll see if that happens in the later order, or a special meeting possible. Do we have a motion, Karen, second?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. McTague?
Yes, of course.
Any discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
Karen?
No, sir.
No. Okay, call vote, please.
Benado.
Yes.
Gudal.
Yes.
Diego.
Yes.
Mate.
Yes.
Miles.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. Council reports. Mr. Benado.
All I have to report is, uh, you're done with the block ride, right? And I told him have two burritos, but he didn't give me one to ask for.
I was hungry.
I know. But anyway, it was a good time. I think we had a good turnout and, and the Toyota, we have to thank them for doing that. And I think a lot of the people enjoyed watching the kids dance and doing a few things there and looking for nickels in a haystack and all that kind of stuff. It was really, really fun.
That was cool to watch.
And there was some good food there and it's just nice that all the community comes together and we can do this. Bertown, very happy. That's all I think.
Gudal.
The only, the only thing I have is, I'll give what update I have on numbers from the Blues Fest. It looks like our numbers downtown were up to around twenty-six hundred people, best we can count. Blues Fest attendance stayed around between fifty-two and fifty-five hundred. Bar sales were down. I think that was all top shelf liquor. But another very successful fest. Thank you very much to the city of Trinidad. We try to promote y'all as much, all of us as much as possible to make sure without the continued support and help from the city, it wouldn't be possible. Thank you.
Do you want to talk about the C U P here?
So, you want me to talk? So we, we did have our first meeting for the C I P. Me and Pat Fletcher and Michelle Miles attended, so I bring no notes, but so we will be having another meeting Thursday and another meeting the following Thursday and hopefully have a plan put together and wrapped up, so. We're getting some good things together and see where all, we're going to promote it, the TPs and the restaurants with stuff on it and some kind of banner. I'm gonna persuade the Blues Fest board with the new banner printing machine. We can get stuff made for next to nothing. So we're well on our way to getting a plan in place for, to start promoting the new, keeping the one cent capital improvement tax in place.
Thank you. I have nothing else. Any, is it?
I went to my regular meeting of the library board and some of you that were here at the last meeting recall, can you hear me? Okay, okay. Councilwoman Davis reported that there was something said at county commissioners meeting about the the atmosphere at the library and, you know, it's, it's just all gossip and we talked about it at the library and, and, you know, Mallory Board and staff are full aware of these, these innuendos flying around town, but it's, it's absolutely not true. Somebody said that the library stinks. Well, if you were a hundred and fifty or two hundred years old, you probably have a funny smell too. It's not dirt, it's just an old building. But anyway, I passed out to city council and some extra ones I gave to the audience. But these are actual feedback comments made by the, by the parents of the kids that went to the summer program this year, and every one of them is, is positive. Nobody that's taken their child to the library has ever come to the library board or to Mallory and, and expressed some kind of dissatisfaction as to what's going on there. I understand where people are coming from. There, you know, there's a homeless population here, but in any public building, you have that concern that is. You just have to deal with it the best you can with the resources that you have available to you. And I think the library staff and Mallory in particular is doing a great job.
Mr. Mate.
Yes. I'd like to report on my attendance to a tourism board meeting, August twenty-eighth. Mr. Rico, you were there, so you can verify or refute that, what I'm about to say. I want to make my presentation in terms of, or the context of the Thorndike effect, chaos, apologies, and lessons learned. There are two backstories that are important to this meeting. One is recall in the late spring, early summer, when we challenged the tourism board for choosing not to fund the Chamber of Commerce. Linda Baron's request for funds for the Trinidad Sanofi Trails Day. You recall that? Okay, in fact, it's I think Si, Tom Kress, and perhaps Camilla.
Yes.
Came to address that. That, that was precipitated when Ms. Baron came to visit me at my place of employment, was extremely distraught, having felt rejected by that decision. So taking it upon myself, I called Si to ask about that. And when held in comparison to the funding of other programs, there was a huge discrepancy and it was brought to my attention. It was an awkward situation. Ms. Baron failed to successfully complete all the proper paperwork, yada, yada, yada. They didn't get any money. Okay, and that's where it remained. The second backstory is on the tourism meeting of August the fourteenth. That one, Mr. Murphy was present for, and that one you can see on Trinidad Times seventy-one. The one to which I'm referring, on the twenty-eighth, Mr. Murphy was not there, there was a big change over what day the meeting was going to be, yada, yada, yada. I showed up on Tuesday, it was on Wednesday. You know the story and the complication and all that, but he does have an audio representation of that meeting to which I speak. The mayor arrived shortly after I was there and the panel was assembled. And those are the two backstories. In the second backstory, during that meeting on the eighteenth, and to save you some time, having, you can watch the whole thing, it's rather entertaining. Beginning at the, at the beginning and continuing for two and a half hours. But at one hour, nineteen minutes, and fourteen seconds. And this, by the way, was called to my attention by a colleague on council who were having, had occasion to witness that, said, "You should take a look at this. You're, you're given a mention." So that having been said, I set aside two hours on a Tuesday, on a Saturday to watch the entire thing. Anyway, commencing at one hour, nineteen minutes, and fourteen seconds, Mr. Kress arrived, acquired the floor and in an attempt to console Ms. Lackey, who had been aggravated to a very distraught condition, she was crying, by someone who had made a presentation. It was a, a, the presentation, you have to see it, but the presentation was made by a business owner who felt slighted by the tourism board in a recent pilot project they had undertaken to bring people from out of town into the city and show them what was available here. At any rate, it was a kind of vociferous exchange between the board and the the person who felt offended. So at any rate, Mr. Kress, in an attempt to console Ms. Lackey, says, and I tried to transcribe as best I could. "The one thing I want to say, Nancy, is that I think we all, we just meet with a city council member attacking the things we do. I think that we're a board, and if people have issues, they should come to the board and not to just one person, like Anthony Mate being a city council member. And I probably shouldn't have. He should have come to the board to clear things up, just as she should have. So I took issue with my name being mentioned in such a negative context. Perhaps I was an overreaction on my part, but that's the way I roll. So I promptly sat down at computer and drafted a very snappy response. The Thorndike effect. That's education that occurs when there's a painful emotional learning experience through a negative situation. I was about to experience a Thorndike effect when I made disappearance, okay? Chaos, not so much in a lack of order, but chaos to the acronym, councilman has arrived on site. I thought that would be clever, but anyway, I showed up on the twenty-eighth and created chaos by my presence. And then, what I did, I made this really, really spiffy presentation which raised the ire of the board. And in the audio, you might hear the exchange thereafter. Mr. Salazar took issue with the fact that this is a volunteer position that he has, he doesn't get paid, yada, yada, yada. He missed a lot of time. Mr. Kress was very offended that I would have the audacity to question what tourism does. And he took particular issue with, when he was making a point about a conversation he and his wife were having, I laughed. And he thought that that was inappropriate. Si seemed to be somewhat overwhelmed as she was trying to control the meeting and was imploring the mayor to help her gain control. I didn't think it was all that, you, you can hear the audio, you'll see how it was. Nancy was trying to educate me as to the role of the tourism board to create situations to cause out of town people to come and spend overnight stays and therefore generate revenue for the city of Trinidad. Ms. Campbell sat there. She chose to do or say nothing. So that's the chaos that was created, and it was an awkward situation. I took my leave before the meeting was concluded. As a matter of fact, I could see that there was no benefit to my presence. If anything, I was agitating the situation, so to remove the chaos, councilman has arrived on scene, I departed. Fact is, as you suggested, we needed to step back. So I thought it appropriate, since I was the one standing, step back, and I completed. I would expect anybody else to be in the meeting. So that makes sense. Okay, so now to my apologies. My apology first to Mr. Salazar. I realize that he is a volunteer. I appreciate the efforts of all of our volunteers, the time commitment and perseverance and the dedication required. I have been a volunteer, a school board, and a lot of different things since nineteen ninety-eight. Ms. Baron is the consummate volunteer. So to Mr. Salazar, I appreciate if I minimize your role. To Mr. Kress, I apologize to you, sir. If in the course of my presentation, I inadvertently challenged you in a more harsh way than I should have when I questioned your decision to not fund the Chamber of Commerce. Lesson learned to me is be a little bit more tactful when questioning someone else's work. And I will be more mindful of that. And I certainly apologize for having laughed at the point he was trying to make. I thought it was particularly humorous. He didn't intend it to be that way, and I'm sorry that that happened, but I do apologize. To Ms. Michaels, the chair. If I created a disturbing situation for her that left her at a loss as to how to proceed, I don't think it was all that bad, but you can hear and decide for yourself. I apologize for having disrupted her meeting. To Nancy. I apologize to Nancy for having left and departed and cut her off when she was trying to explain the role of tourism. Because as I tell you, I decided this was not the mountain on which I chose to die. And it was better for me to get the hell out of here and not agitate anymore with my presence, so I left. But I do apologize to Nancy for having cut her off in her mid-presentation. And to Ms. Campbell, I apologize to her, although she didn't really have a lot to say or do. But she and I have been friends since the early seventies of Trinidad State. And I apologize for having disrupted her day, such as it were. So what are the lessons learned? All of this is for not, if I didn't learn something. And what I learned is I need to be more. And what I learned is I need to be more skinned. Lord knows, I've been a lifetime of career where people are not gonna be happy with me. So, I don't know why I became thin-skinned on my most recent birthday. But be that as it may, I will resume to be thick-skinned and not, like I mentioned, in a public setting in a negative way, aggravating as it does. Lesson number two. Do not sit down at the computer and write a snappy report. It serves no purpose other than to encourage you to vent. What are you looking at? An understating of justice. It encourages one to vent and to gain control of your emotion. Okay? Worse yet, the ultimate lesson, number three. Do not bring snappy report to public meeting and recite it. Those who will listen to it do not appreciate it in the vein in which you wrote it. So, it's very important that I don't do that. And that's the lesson that I have learned. Uh, that all having been said, and, uh, these people deserve a public apology. Come, because I'm trying to make it just so I can have some face-saving endeavor here, is to say, "I sincerely, I am sincerely sorry for having, um, broached the subject of funding from the tourism board in such a hostile attitude. I could have been more diplomatic about how I presented that." I still think that it was, and I, as I pointed out, it was inappropriate for me to come and address the whole board when they have a chairperson. Is that not the way it works? You know, chain of custody or chain of command? Not chain of custody, chain of command. You know, you speak to the one person in charge, that's a little, that goes from there. But I will be more mindful and respectful of everyone's feelings this point forward. And that all having been said, I, I follow my sword here. Probably could have done a better job with the way I handled it, but, uh, I'd do it again if I am charged with overseeing the expenditures of the tourism board. That's what I do. The, uh, the tourism board is funded because the voters approved a tax, a lodging tax. They also created a committee to oversee the expenditures of them. But they don't work independent of governance. They work basically for city council or with city council. And those of us who are charged and are elected rather than appointed to a position, and those of us who take an oath as compared to all the other positions, we are empowered by the citizens with their trust and confidence to act in their best behalf. And I think it's our fiduciary responsibility to oversee the actions of all boards and commissions. And I will not resign myself from that responsibility. However, I have learned a lesson, to not be a smartass and to be more mindful of other people's feelings. That's it. I'm done.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Matey?
I will. Yeah, the tourism board meetings more and more. I won't either.
I will, man.
It'll be chaos. Councilman has arrived on site.
I will, I will mention your sentiments and apologies.
Okay.
Okay?
I mean, yeah.
Thank you very much. Uh, for my end, uh, last week, I attended a C doc meeting, now there's area planning meeting at the county commissioners' office. Uh, there were some people from the state level, as also from the area. And they were talking about, uh, planning for pretty much this area and what could possibly, and we wanted to take in any suggestions from the people that were there of issues. And, uh, one of the, the suggestions that I brought up is now that we have this Fisher's Peak deal, is if you come out of exit eight there and back to town, that short distance is so short, it's dangerous. Because I've gone through there, and you're looking back to see if there's somebody coming at you. So, uh, that will probably be in their fifth year plan down the road. It's not gonna be needed, because this planning, I think, it sounds like it's, it's going to be for the next, probably after the five-year plan that they've got going on. But they do need to hear other things that are going on in, in the area.
To, to, to your point, to clarify that, for people who are using that on ramp, signage might have. Short ramp, accelerate quickly, something of that order.
Okay.
Because, uh, to your point, you know, when you get on it, you look in the mirror, you see a radiator, a camera. Does that get your attention?
Very much, yeah. Very fast, yeah. Thank you.
Mayor, I'm sorry. Did they make any mention of what's going on with exit eleven?
Yeah, they did. There was, there was some talk about, uh, exit eleven and... I'm just trying to think exactly. I'll have to get some more information on that.
Okay.
There, there was some talk about exit eleven.
Because that's gonna impact all the hotels and more.
Right. But they, um, I'll try to find that out, some more information on that, and also maybe what the timeframe on that might be. There's also extensive talk about that.
Aren't they gonna build the new exit before they close off?
Yes, they are.
So, they keep some, that's what I read, dude.
It will be a typical construction zone, as it was supposed to be. But it will probably mean over.
I don't know if anybody went to the TSJC when they had that, um, where they were able to see how that whole thing was supposed to work.
The roundabouts?
On the roundabouts, and it looks like a big dog bone, is what it looks like, so.
Yeah.
It's gonna be interesting how that all works. Uh, Mr. Matey, I mentioned I attended that tourism meeting last week. Uh, I had to leave early because, as well as you did, I had to leave early because something else came up. Um, I also attended a meeting at, uh, Pinion Canyon. Uh, there was, uh, Mr. Thomas Masha from, uh, from DC was here. And, uh, the primary idea they wanted me to be there was, there was two items there that they talked about was, as we all know, the pipeline that goes right down the middle, there's some extensive talk about the pipeline that goes right down the middle of the entire, it's a gas line. And they talked about maybe, uh, having to move that in the future, because right now it kind of impacts on their capabilities, because it's right in the middle of the, of the entire project. Uh, the big thing was, they wanted me to emphasize our support for, uh, Pinion Canyon. You know, and I mentioned to them that we as council, currently, we are all in support of, uh, of what, you know, Pinion Canyon. Because that's something that I've heard from everyone this year on the council. I also mentioned to them in talking to, uh, the county commissioners, individuals, and they're all supportive of Pinion Canyon. Because they told me that personally themselves. And I, I also mentioned that, uh, a lot of the community seems to be very supportive of Pinion Canyon at this point in time, so. So, it was, it was about a half an hour meeting. They don't give you a whole lot of time, so. I had to talk quick, unless they have to cover other stuff that they're talking about, so. That was pretty much it. Item number ten, reports by city manager. Okay. Les?
I don't have anything to say.
Okay, please. But item eleven, executive session, for discussion of personnel matter under CRS, section twenty-four dash six, dash four, two, two F, and not involving any specific employees who have requested discussion of a matter in open session, any member of this body or any elected official, the appointment of any person to fill an office of this body or of any elected official, or personnel policy that do not require the discussion of matters personnel to particular employees. City manager evaluation, call up. Motion to go. Motion go to executive session. So, move, second?
Second?
Any discussion? Call vote, please?
Donato?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes.
Matey?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?[1782.42]